Good evening, everyone. Welcome to those of you in person and to those live streaming. Welcome to this evening's meeting. I will have our legal counsel take a roll call and establish a quorum. Present. Here.
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 Thank you. And student member Nwala, will you lead us in a pledge, please? The board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The board took action on the following items. On item 3.1, the board voted 5-0 to approve the expulsion of student ID number 201179615 and to suspend the enforcement of the expulsion order pursuant to Education Code Section 48917 and provide an opportunity for the student to attend another school within the district. The student will be eligible to apply for readmission after June 11, 2026. The board voted 5-0 to approve the expulsion of student ID number 201125003. And on item 3.5, the board voted 5-0 to approve a settlement agreement in workers' compensation case numbers 22882713 and 231099348, resolving all claims against the district. And now we are at adoption of the agenda as posted. Yes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? How about our student board member with a preferential vote?
Aye.
So that passes 5-0 with one preferential vote. Next, we have the introduction of our student representative. And so tonight, we have Miu Takahashi joining us from CAM, so we welcome you.
Pursuing a dual pathway in computer science and engineering while proudly serving as the ASB president for the 2025 to the 2026 school year. I would like to thank the Board of Education and my ASB advisor for this opportunity to share the work we are doing to strengthen our school and community. CAM's built for diverse, passionate students entering science, technology, engineering, and mathematics fields in 1990, still strive today. Through a rigorous curriculum to advance their knowledge technically and collaboratively, CAM's continues to provide an environment where students from a wide range of backgrounds are supported in their growth. Currently ranked as the fifth-best high school in California and the number-one school in the Long Beach Unified School District, we take academic excellence seriously. Our students have the opportunity to take over 19 AP courses, which nine are required, as well as Project Lead the Way PLTW courses, which help them discover their passions and prepare for college and beyond. Last year, CAM saw outstanding success on AP exams. In 2021, the pass rate of AP tests were approximately 68%. However, the number increased drastically with a pass rate of 90.07% in 2024. Among the graduating class of 2026, 30 students were recognized as National Merit Scholarship Program qualifiers, an extraordinary accomplishment given that only about 1,200 students nationwide receive this distinction every year. In addition to their individual experience and excellence, CAM's students are required to partake in what is known as the interdisciplinary project, also known as IDP, which tasks each grade with a large collaborative challenge in the STEM realm. Students learn about teamwork and the practical application of scientific methods, helping students build relationships and critical thinking and problem-solving skills. In addition, our counselors and staff have been giving us undying support to expand classroom opportunities. For example, the AP Capstone Program, once offered as an elective sequence of AP seminar and AP research, has now been incorporated in the sophomore English curriculum, providing more students access to advanced academic study and research analysis. Although CAM's is widely recognized for its STEM excellence, we excel across sports and student leadership as well. Last year, our girls tennis team won CIF championship. Additionally, the girls team qualified for CIF in cross-country, and our swim team and girls volleyball team also earned CIF qualification. The student government has also been working hard. Currently, ASB is working diligently to prepare for our annual outreach event, known as Taste of CAMs, which attracts roughly 1,200 attendees every year. This event provides the Carson community and beyond what an inside look of the unique opportunities available at CAMs. With over 100 student clubs, students showcase their passions while collectively raising over $50,000 during the event to support future club activities. In addition, ASB is hosting fall games during lunch this week, where classes compete in traditional sports such as volleyball, basketball, soccer, and pickleball. In just three weeks, Red Ribbon Week will engage students in raising awareness about the dangers of drugs and alcohol through fun and educational activities. Lastly, our Fall Spirit Rally will include dress-up days, lunch activities, and Friday run-ins, featuring dance and lip sync performances in just about a month. Beyond outreach, ASB has made it a priority to strengthen cultural awareness and inclusion efforts. Beginning in 2024, we launched a series of events celebrating the diverse cultures and ethnicities represented on our campus. For example, during Hispanic Heritage Month, from September 15 to October 15, we expanded activities to weekly Friday events. These initiatives have already shown measurable impact. According to our 2024 to the 2025 Second Semester Poll Survey, student reports of inclusion are 85% and are continuing to increase. Our newly-established multicultural fair night, which debuted last year, was a great success and will continue to grow in future years. ASB is also planning a new event, a flea market for Earth Day, providing clubs opportunities to fundraise by selling goods. Inspired by our participation in the Evolve Schools ASB camp with other Long Beach Unified ASB classes, we launched an art exhibit to provide students passionate about art with a new way to express their passions. We hope to continue to bring in more events to ensure every student feels valued and welcomed. Among our 100 clubs, 1/3 of our students proudly call themselves part of Nerd Herd 687. With their First Robotics Competition Club, First Tech Challenge Club, and Vex Robotics Club, our team's motto, "We build people, not just robots," reminds us the importance of growth but also teaches us collaboration and compassion. By utilizing this motto, clubs such as First Robotics have expanded outreach to the wider community, teaching younger students about STEM. For example, they created an interactive 3D-printed robot to engage with young patients at the Miller's Hospital. Other clubs have also achieved notable success. Over 30 students attended the San Francisco HOSA Conference. Our math club recently celebrated a student, placing second place overall at the ALIF 5 Math Competition in March. Our speech and debate team and academic decathlon team earned awards during competition earlier in the year. CAMs also recognizes and supports the unique dreams of every student, including those pursuing interests outside of STEM. Many of our graduates leave with passions for business or entrepreneurship. CAMs has expanded business-related opportunities, including internships and the creation of clubs like DECA and FBLA. In 2024, we launched a mentorship program as a new elective to ensure both collaborative and individual growth. Our Student Site Council, composed of staff, students, and parents, advocate for specific budget allocation. The findings of these opportunities increase student government in many, many forms to ensure that everyone's needs are met. As a small school with a population of just 667 students, we call ourselves a family, and we will continue to build these strong relationships in the future. Thank you again for allowing me to speak before this prestigious Board of Education. We are deeply grateful for your ongoing support and dedication to our Long Beach schools. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that very comprehensive report on what CAMs is doing. But how about, on a more personal note, as a senior, you probably have some plans for next year?
Yes, so I've always had a love for aerospace, ever since I was in the fourth grade. So my dream school is currently right now UC Berkeley, and I've been trying to get my PIIQs in and doing all of my college applications, but I hope that in the future, maybe I can come back to Long Beach and pursue something in the aerospace industry.
Well, yeah, absolutely. Well, that's great because Long Beach has a very long history of aerospace. Kind of a lot of the city was built on that, actually. So that would be wonderful. I'm looking at Mr. Itzen, should we take a break now and do a photo? So we're going to have you come forward, and we're going to do a group photo. So we're just going to take a little pause in the meeting so we can do that. So if you'll join us. And also, before you go, I forgot to ask if you had somebody here to support you, Miu. So if you'll come to the podium once again and then recognize who you have in support tonight.
Yes, so my lovely mother is here. She's here. Thank you so much.
And thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
And next, we have a report from our student board member. We'll go to board member Nwala.
Yeah, so yesterday was a really eventful day at McBride High School. We had our Pathway ambassadors who hosted a freshman field day to continue in introducing our freshmen to our high school and making sure they feel welcome and supported. And then those same Pathway ambassadors helped support ASB last night with our back-to-school night, where we saw great involvement from our parents, people signing up for student school site council, as well as our Pathway Booster Clubs and Sankofa Parent Village, which is a new club started at McBride. So it's been really amazing to see that.
Okay, and then I think next we have an acknowledgement. Do you want to do that now? And then we'll do the, we have a video after that, so we'll have you read the acknowledgement now.
Celebrating Disability History and Awareness Month. Disability History Month recognizes the important contributions of people with disabilities have made throughout the history of the United States, and as a part of this, also recognizes the important legislative accomplishments of the disability rights movement led by disability advocates, parents with children with disabilities, and in communities across the United States. LBUSD strongly believes in the importance of all students, with and without disabilities, deepening our understanding about disability history and strengthening their cultural competence, understanding, and acceptance of people with disabilities and the important contributions of people with disabilities have had and continue to have on our society. Disability History Month allows all students to know where they've been and the endless possibilities of where they can go, while developing a sense of pride in themselves and their disabilities, and becoming more civically engaged within their communities.
Thank you. And now I'll direct our attention to the screens. I believe we have a short video.
My name is Jules Rodriguez. I work at Nelson Academy here in Signal Hill, and I've been at Long Beach Unified for three years, but I've been teaching for over 10. When you've been in this career for so long, you've worked with some amazing teachers. To be placed in a position where you represent them, it's a huge honor, but it's a huge responsibility, too. So for me, it's just, it's very humbling. I just received a letter last year from a group of students that I had, I want to say it was about nine years ago. They took a picture all together right after graduation, and they told me, "This is where we're going. Thank you so much for this." And just kind of a little brag letter about where they all are right now is that reminder of that moment in time, those parents trusted you with their children, and you made an impact that lasted. One of the most challenging and rewarding things in education is for us as educators to be willing to get out of the way, but also know that we can build the capacity and the grit within them to do it for themselves.
It's always nice to see those celebrations, always nice. So next on our agenda is public testimony. So do we have anybody to speak on, for items listed on the agenda?
We have two speakers tonight. The first one will be Billy Brown.
Good evening, presidents, members of the board, superintendent, and community. My name is Billy Brown. I am the founder of FOCUS. FOCUS stands for Families Observing Cultures and Uniting Students. We are a Long Beach-based 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and we are committed to one goal, and that's ensuring our students can travel to and from school safely. FOCUS was born out of a simple but urgent truth: Our students deserve to arrive at school ready to learn, not to worry about what might happen to them on their way. Families across Long Beach have witnessed the risks, violence, harassment, unsafe conditions that too often stand between our child and their classroom. Our Safe Passage Program addresses the need head-on. We provide trained, visible staff who are present during high traffic times before and after school. These staff are not only guardians of safety, they are mentors, community members, and trusted faces who help build bridges between schools, families, and neighborhoods. On the Agenda 16.1, I want to make clear that we have parents, we have school admin, and community members that have reached out to me in the FOCUS groups specifically requesting the safe passages services at their school. We look forward to the interaction with the board and the district staff, and most importantly, to bring part of the reduction of violence in and around our schools. We are not just a proposal on a paper, we are a community-based organization with deep roots, lived experience, and track record of service. We are ready to sit down with you to partner and to make Safe Passage a reality to every student in Long Beach. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your commitment to student safety.
And thank you as well.
Chris Covington?
Good afternoon. My name is Christopher Covington. I'm pronounced Ahe, and I'm representing Safer LBUSD. Also, I want to recognize that tonight is Yom Kippur, one of the high-holiest holidays for our Jewish communities. Many of those folks aren't here today because they are at temple from sundown to sundown. I am speaking on item 16.1, which is the modification for the school safety, the Office of School Safety Operational Modification. As you all learned at our last presentation, Safer LBUSD has been working closely with the district to improve services, strategy, and the model to be a violence-prevention-first approach model in the district. With the modifications, we have gone forward and had multiple conversations and arrived that this new modification will, and authority will give this district the opportunity to put students on a path to success and not on a path to the school-to-prison pipeline. We are entrusting in that commitment, that that is the path that we're moving forward with. As a campaign, as a coalition, we're committed to monitor the process, and we hope that we have positive outcomes with this new additional authority and modification, and that we don't revert back to law and order and the negative experience that our Black and Brown students have experienced for so many years from the district. So we stand in support of the new modification cautiously in support of the modification, and we look forward to partnering with the district to see this through and to put students on the path to success and excellence. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on the agenda, we have public testimony on items not listed on the agenda.
We have one speaker tonight, Jerleene Tatum.
Good evening, Jerleene Tatum. I'm going to start out with something fabulous. So I am a parent of a senior at Millikan High School, and last night I went to my last back-to-school night, and I almost cried. I just want to say I really love his teachers, but actually it felt good as an alum of Millikan and to be able to be in community with parents, and it was really funny because I ran across a parent that said, "I really have to go to the bathroom." And I said, "Well, the bathroom's right there." And she says, "I can't go to the bathroom and make it to class on time." And we fell out laughing, and we realized the pains that our children go through. So anyway, I just want to say, you know, shout out to Millikan for doing an amazing job last night. I'm here to talk about a multitude of things, and one of the things that I wanted to bring up, I was review, I was, I listened to one of the meetings and was regarding where there's a conversation about the guardrails and the goals and such. And one of the items that is on this list was that by June 2028, 45 schools will have established Sankofa Parent Villages from 12 schools to, from 45, from 12 schools to 45. My question is, how do you plan on doing that? What's the plan? Since the Black Student Achievement Initiative has been implemented, there's still no plan. And how are you going to get from 12 to 45? And I just wanted to ask, please do not be consumed with quantity over quality. As a parent, a high school student who have been participating in Sankofa Villages at my school site, every single year we start over. So there's really no progress, other than I get to meet another new set of parents, and I get to hear the same thing over, and I get to meet new staff again. So again, what is your plan? And in that, that is a goal, but how does that goal connect with the success and advancement of our Black students? So I just want to ask you guys to be intentional in that, because every time I hear it, it actually makes my face twitch a little bit, like 12 to 45, what's the plan? Also, I was asked by a parent to mention, oh, this is Agenda Item 14.9, just to ask that approval of coaches, make sure that the coaches that you bring on are honest and have integrity, and that they lead our teams in such a manner. So, since I'm up here, I would be remiss to not mention the recent thing that took place, came out in the press yesterday, and I basically want to say the disappointment that I have for my particular school board member for signing off on what I consider political theater and the incident that has taken place with the teacher at McArthur. It's really insulting and offensive to see a board member's name on something calling out anti-blackness when parent after parent after parent have expressed our concerns with anti-blackness in our schools, and we ignored, dismissed, and never responded to.
Thank you. Just as a point of clarification, or actually information, at our next board meeting, we will be talking about the Sankofa Parent Village, and you may be interested in either attending or watching that meeting. Okay, so with no further interest in public testimony, we will go to reports on superintendent advisory groups, starting with the Business Budget and Policy Development. Dr. Benitez.
Just a very short report, Madam President. So this morning, as part of our board workshop, we did have a conversation around approaches to reviewing policies, developing policies, and so I think it was informative. We didn't land on final decisions, but I would just encourage our board to, when we do a recap over that, that we think through what our approach is going to be to passing policy. A part of the conversation that was had this morning was around perhaps using the board goals and guardrails as a consideration, in addition to any policies that we have to either update or pass because of compliance, that in order for us to actually dedicate the time that policies deserve, that we think through, okay, which policies do we want to come back to the board? Which policies that may just require an update or some minor changes do we want to include in the consent calendar, thereby allowing for us to be able to review two to three policies at a time, knowing full well that we have many more policies that we're just not going to be able to devote enough time to? And so rather than try and attempt to review 30, 40 policies, that we prioritize those policies that most align with our board goals and guardrails. No decision was made, but we did have a brief check-in with council about mapping out some possible next steps and then prioritizing and identifying those policies that would come back to the board for more discussion.
Thank you. And next, we have Instruction and Student Learning Support. Member Lopez.
Just a short report. We met to discuss the English Learner Master Plan and the need to have it ready for board approval in a timely manner. And so while the district has engaged the community for input, we discussed that certain components of the plan are appropriate for community feedback, but others are just compliance-driven and may be ready for board approval. The plan, the final plan will be brought to the board for approval later this fall.
Thank you. And Workforce Development, Member Miller.
Yes, so I'm here to provide a quick update on both the board authorizations and the coaching authorization, which we'll be voting on just in a short time here. So this is the time of year when we approve our board authorizations and coaching authorizations in HRS, according to Education Code 44256b, 44258.2, and 44263. Board authorizations are granted to multiple subjects and single-subject credential holders. This authorization enables teachers to teach in a subject outside of their credentialed area. Teachers must complete 12 units in additional subject area for middle school and 18 units for high school. There are a total of 181 board authorizations for the 25-26 school year. And according to Education Code 44258.7b, coaching authorizations are given to full-time teachers who hold a credential in a subject other than physical education to coach a competitive sport for which the student receives physical education credit for one period a day. Teachers with a coaching authorization must complete- Teachers with a coaching authorization must complete a minimum of twenty hours of first aid instruction appropriate to the specific sport. For the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we have a total of sixty-one coaches.
Thank you. And next we have our consent calendar, so we'll need a motion.
Move for approval?
Second. Any discussion on our consent calendar, Member Lopez?
I do, on item fourteen point six. Can someone explain the need to extend the contract with Robert Haupt, Inc., who provides technology support resources on an as needed basis? And this contract's going from two hundred sixty-two thousand to three hundred two thousand.
Yes, Board Member Lopez, thank you for the question. This is a staff augmentation contractor, it's a technical contractor that's working part-time on a very important project to update our storage, the district's storage. So we're moving from kind of an older storage appliance to a newer storage appliance and moving all those files across and rebuilding all those access controls for, for district staff. So it's, it is very tedious work and we do think that this will be the last extension of this particular individual. We look forward to wrapping up the project very soon.
I also have questions on item fourteen point six, numbers four, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-six and thirty-eight. These are contracts totaling two million ninety-three thousand three hundred twenty-five to support students with exceptional needs. And just for the public's understanding, can someone give a brief summary of what these contracts cover?
Sure. So there's a handful of contracts, as you mentioned, and so these are either to provide direct services to students. For example, the contract with Downey Unified is to provide schooling to students who are deaf and hard of hearing in programs that we do not offer here in the district. The other contracts are to provide independent educational evaluations or services as part of the alternative dispute resolution process.
Dr. Benitez?
Yeah, just a quick question, Dr. Solsa Valderrama. So I see the approval of community advisory committee appointments, one hundred and eighty-six wonderful members. Wondering if you could talk a little bit about how those new members were constituted? You know, how did we land on one eighty-six, sort of just process-wise? And if you could give us a, just a quick summary of sort of how that happened?
Yes, so we, our membership for the CAC had been dwindling. So in the last couple of months, there was an outreach through social media and we posted it in different places where essentially anybody in our community could apply to be a member of CAC. We really did get an overwhelming response. And so we brought some names two meetings ago and then more meetings. Now, we went through a process of just verifying that these are actually parents, community members that actually are within our community, and so that's what you have today.
So just, that's great and, and great to see overwhelming interest, right, in participating. So is that a, a cap at one eighty-six? And also, if you're not a member, that doesn't preclude you from attending CAC? My presumption is it doesn't preclude you from?
It does not. So elections for CAC are going to be held next week at our next meeting. So anybody who is a member is able to run for CAC board spot. And so we'll have, those will be the people that will be kind of in charge of running the meetings and they have different responsibilities. But you don't have to be a member to participate in CAC, anybody can come to CAC. This is for them to be eligible to be, run, run for the board seats.
And if there is interest at some point for others that may be interested in being members, is there a process or somewhere they could go for more information for that?
Yes, so it's a running membership. And so we do have a website where they can, there's actually a Google form where they can attend one of the meetings.
Congratulations to those one eighty-six.
Yes, and thank you for everybody volunteering to participate. It's like a wonderful support group. Is there any further discussion on the consent calendar? If not, I want to highlight the Resolution Supporting National Principals Month. So October twenty twenty-five is National Principals Month as celebrated by the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the American Federation of School Administrators and the National Association of Secondary School Principals. And whereas school principals embody elements of our Vision Twenty Thirty-Five Adult Portrait, working daily to support each student's journey toward realizing their potential by being champions for students, equity-focused change agents, positive and resilient professionals, adaptable and reflective lifelong learners, empathetic communicators, empowering facilitators of learning, creative and critical thinkers and community-minded and collaborative leaders. And whereas the vision, dedication and determination of a principal serve as mobilizing forces behind any school improvement effort. And whereas school principals interact daily with students and cultivate positive working relationships with parents as well as certificated and classified staff. And whereas school principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, budget analysts, facility managers, special programs administrators and guardians of various legal, contractual and policy mandates and initiatives. And whereas school principals are multipliers of good teaching, key to teacher retention and second only to classroom instruction among all school-related factors affecting what students learn at school. And whereas the Long Beach Unified School District is recognized as one of the world's leading school systems, thanks in large part to school principals who work tirelessly and contribute immensely to high-quality learning environments for students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified School District hereby acknowledges October twenty twenty-five as National Principals Month and urges everyone to express their deep gratitude to school principals for their vital contributions to thousands of students. And they certainly work hard. So thank you to all our school principals. So without further discussion, I will ask our legal counsel to take a roll call vote on the consent calendar.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Vice President Otto, President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student board member Nawala?
Aye.
That passes five zero with one preferential vote.
Thank you. And next we have Consent Calendar B. We need a motion?
Move for approval?
Second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I recuse myself from this vote.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? And Member Nawala?
Aye.
So that passes four one with a preferential vote. And that brings us to item sixteen or sixteen point one under New Business with the Office of School Safety Operational Modification. And if you remember, we had a presentation at our last meeting and so tonight this is coming before us for a vote. And we were given a, an updated packet because there were a couple of minor changes. Dr. Brown, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. Good evening. We're excited to bring this item back for action this evening. The packet that you have in front of you reflects several slides that we added to the slide deck after you received and after the agenda posted on Friday. All my fault, all my responsibility. The intention there is that we were engaged with community members, our two colleagues from Safer LBUSD, Dr. Kim Tabari and Chris Covington, who are here this evening. And we wanted to make sure that what you are considering this evening is inclusive of our collective feedback and also to address several of the questions that were posed at our last meeting by board members, et cetera. So what Mr. Smith is prepared to do this evening is to just go through several slides to answer questions or concerns that had been posed before you consider the item for action this evening. So if you're okay with that, he's ready to do that?
I believe we're okay with that. I'm gonna speak to the board.
You can do that.
And we welcome, do I say Mr. Smith or what's your title actually? Like, is it captain or admiral or what is it?
Admiral, that's a good, a director of school safety.
Admiral, I don't know.
All right, well, thank you, board members, for having me back today. I'm very excited to share with you kind of our take on the feedback that we received from you from the last meeting as well as our partners within the community. So I just want to highlight a few key areas that I think really address that feedback that, that you provided to us. The first one, one of the pieces of feedback we got was that really this program and law enforcement response in general needs to focus on intervention, sending out social workers and focusing on the why, not the, and the cause, not just reactive to that situation. And I want to highlight, the Office of School Safety has been doing that since two thousand sixteen. And we use a differentiated approach model. We have three different classifications within our office that we triage as a school site calls us for assistance and requests assistance. Our dispatcher will take the information from that call and route the appropriate personnel. So our step one or one of our, our individuals or classifications is the school intervention specialist. That classification and that response is really focused on assisting students in some type of behavior dysregulation. The old model before two thousand sixteen, oh, the student is being defiant, they're not listening, let's send an officer or request an officer to come help and get this student back to class. And we've created negative interactions, especially with our young children. And this change in two thousand sixteen was to address that, where we could send a non-armed, ununiformed individual out there to provide support for the student but also support for the staff in getting that student back to class. That has since expanded and taken on a larger role where they're not only responding to those situations, but they're going out to school sites where we're receiving reports of conflict or growing tension amongst students. In an attempt to intervene, they sit down in small groups and really do conflict management, conflict resolution with those individuals. The second set that we have is our school crisis response clinicians. Those are a contract that we carry with the Guidance Center Long Beach and it's two marriage and family therapists that are responding to calls where there's some type of emotional crisis or mental health concern that goes beyond what the school staff can handle in that moment. Our goal again is to regulate that student and get them back into class, but then also connect them and make sure that the families and the student have resources after the fact. Our last response model would be our school safety officers. And they are there to respond to incidents that have the potential to or have already resulted in a crime occurring, including violent acts, weapons on campus and threats to staff and students and to the school. So this model is continually to grow as we evaluate. We've increased the number of school intervention specialists to reach a wider range of, of schools and more support. And so I just wanted to highlight that because that was one of the concerns and, and we have that model and that model has been supported over several years. One of the other topics that came up was, or questions that would ask is, what makes school safety different? Right? What makes school safety different than a local agency responding? The answer to that is in addition to the required state trainings, our trainings and what we look for when we go out and say, hey, what trainings are available for us? We look through that K-12 system lens. How is this training going to help us in our everyday work in supporting our students? Some of the trainings I have listed here with very, very big focus on interacting and communicating with students. Starting that communication, building those connections is the first step to, hey, let's peel back this layer and really find out what's going on. Other trainings also include identifying and recognizing signs of a mental health crisis because we're gonna react differently in those moments. If we can identify that early on, we can adjust and shift on how we're interacting, maybe not just with the student, but with staff or parents in those situations. And this is not an end-all-be-all list. Trainings come out, we receive emails daily offering trainings and we're constantly evaluating, looking at how we can apply those to further supporting our students. And next, I really wanted to highlight kind of what the next steps are. And this is really important. We cannot rush this process. This isn't a vote tonight and tomorrow, you know, we've, we've turned over and we're beginning. This has to be intentional and it has to be done right, otherwise it's not going to be effective. Our internal implementation date would be in January. That gives us time to work with our local partners in building MOUs. It helps us solidify our processes as we review those along with our community members. And really looking to shift that mindset across LBUSD. It's not just us that is changing, the way schools are operating, how they're calling, when they're calling, all of that has to change. And that's been slowly going on as we've been spreading more of this communication. But now that we would have an actual implementation date, we can start that conversation, work with our different partners throughout the district to get that message out and start addressing, how do we change staff behavior as well? And lastly, these two slides, just very quick overview is a highlight of what we wanted to put forward with you in conjunction with our Safer LBUSD partners, is really highlighting the collaborative wins. So as I mentioned, in two thousand sixteen, our school intervention specialist program began. In two thousand twenty-two, we reallocated funds from open school safety officer positions and transferred those over to create and hire four additional school intervention specialists. So again, expanding that program. In two thousand twenty-three, in partnership with community, job study and job description modifications to all school safety-related positions, including the campus staff assistant positions were completed. And language was added into those positions to really change the focus into violence prevention, community, working with students in supporting them in every avenue of need that they're gonna have. In two thousand twenty-three, we took a very big safe passage focus and enhancements across the city with multiple community organizations, including the city of Long Beach. This has been a very in-depth process where we've reached out and we've tried to get as much of the community involved in keeping our students safe. And we're really seeing a growing buy-in and effectiveness across those measures. In two thousand twenty-four, there were revisions made to the PULSE survey, which is a survey that's given out to all sixth through twelfth graders on what their expectation is and what their feelings are on school safety and their, how their feelings and their experiences at campus affect their feelings of safety while they're there. And then lastly, as you all voted on last week, in two thousand twenty-five, we were awarded the Prop forty-seven grant to really expand our efforts focusing on restorative justice and outcomes for our youth. So those were just some very brief updates for you. And if you need me, I'm here for questions.
I do have two questions. So my first question is, how will students and families be informed about their rights and how to raise concerns about safety officer interactions? Concerns about safety officer interactions? And then what will the grievance or complaint process look like if a student or parent believes an incident was mishandled?
Absolutely. So out, in addition to the avenues already provided through HR for normal employee complaints, uh, our plan is to create a, uh, landing platform within school safety's webpage where parents, community can instantly fill out a report. I would prefer that we engage our HR partners. So it's not coming across as I'm investigating the complaint, I'm handling the outcome and the evaluation of that. Uh, that would be done in partnership with our investigations team. And that would be, uh, building that out. Uh, we've already started that process and we would be really looking to expand it and make it more forward-facing, uh, in alignment with current HR reporting systems.
Dr. Beneathus.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. It's great to see, uh, updated revised version based on, um, you know, our discussion at the last cohort meeting, but also the continued engagement with, uh, with community, uh, as Dr. Brown referenced. So, um, now, I don't know what to call you, now, Director Smith, Cameron. Regarding the, um, as it was sort of presented and framed at the last meeting, the, the cultural shift resulting in, uh, a shift in actions and adult behavior. I appreciate the language that, the additional language that was included, but as, as all of us here know, it's nice to see words and, and have words in these things. Um, can you talk a little bit more about what we hope to see and get from these trainings, right? I, I particularly like the reaffirmation that we're differentiating ourselves from external law enforcement, uh, agencies. And, and we talked about the context for this is because, uh, students of color, uh, communities of color have not had historically in present day, all positive interactions with law enforcement. So can you talk a little bit more about, uh, it's not just about, you know, it taking the trainings and equipping ourselves or building capacity, uh, but sort of how then we want and hope to see that these, um, trainings, the professional development, um, our community partners, um, also, um, result in culturally affirming, culturally sustaining, uh, culturally responsive, um, approaches, strategies, uh, practices, right, that we see. So could you just expand and then I have one more, uh, um, actually, it may be better to the superintendent around the Pulse, uh, survey, but if, if you can just expand on that more.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. That's a great question. And as you mentioned, the, the words are nice, but actions are, are more important. And I don't want to get caught up on the words that are in here. Uh, for me, one, it's by example. Um, I lead from the top down and that's what I expect from my team. What I want to see from them, and that's something that we got away with, uh, during COVID, just with the, uh, restrictions and the spacing, is that officers need to communicate with students. They need to be present and they need to be out there. And that's as simple as saying hi. That's as simple as, hey, students are walking by, you're welcoming up at the front door, you're doing Rochambeau, and you're starting to build those connections with those students. That starts the process and makes everything else easier. If you're already coming across and being approachable, and that's what our community, I want my community to see, is that my officers are approachable. This isn't a, you're here in an adversary role or you're here to solve a problem. We need to be there proactively to be a friend and be out there. And we've started that. I'm seeing better results at our school sites with our staff being out there. But it has to happen not just with the school staff. It has to be continuous through community. We are increasingly being requested to come out to back-to-school night trunk-or-treat events where we can now interact on a, uh, more personable and friendly and engaging level instead of just responding to a crisis. And so these trainings give our staff the opportunity to learn how to have those conversations. But it starts with me making sure that they are doing that. Um, and through that process, I have a great communication with our principals and our staff at the school sites. If they're not seeing that or they have an issue, they're contacting me directly. And I get phone calls, hey, what happened with this? And we talk it through, we work with the officer and we improve moving forward.
Thank you, uh, Cameron. And that kind of, the last thing you said leads me to really my, my, um, I guess thought, Dr. Baker, around our Pulse survey. And I want to provide context here, um, in terms of, um, how we will know that we're seeing what we hope to see, right, what community will see, and how we hold ourselves accountable to these, uh, words. So the last two iterations of our Pulse survey have showed little to no variance uh, with what our students of color respond, uh, and all other students. Uh, and we've had conversations about what, what does that mean? Uh, right? And, and if, one of the things that we hope, uh, will happen from this shift in our reimagining of school safety is that, um, it will lift up things that our students of color, but specifically our black students, uh, have over and over shared with us not feeling seen, not feeling valued, not being celebrated. And you're describing that, you know, the actions here is saying hi to someone, checking in with someone, not just when there's an issue or something punitive. Um, I'm wondering, Dr. Baker, and we had this conversation at our Black Student Achievement Summit last year. Um, and it was relative to keynote speaker, right? Are we asking, uh, students, particularly our black students, their sense, about their sense of belonging? Uh, right? Um, if, if it is appropriate and time to revisit what we're asking and how we're asking, um, and, and if we could either revise, adapt and/or rethink those questions relative to how we're also reimagining school safety. Uh, it, it's surprising to see little to no variance, particularly from our black students in terms of what they're telling us on our Pulse survey, uh, which inherently is good, right? If we're seeing little to no, but we're not hearing the same thing. We're not seeing, uh, sort of the same educational indicators that we are for all other students. So just kind of throwing it out there, that if we are relying on things like Pulse survey to still give us a sense, um, that, and, and safety is certainly, uh, one of those components. If, if we could sort of rethink or reimagine, maybe we're not asking the right things.
I'll speak generally and then pass to Dr. Brown to speak specifically about the addition of the school safety question. So the Pulse survey actually went under a revision process for this year. That includes the elimination of the core survey, which asks many of the same questions, but was a once-a-year survey. And what we found is the opportunity to have a pulse three times a year on student sense of agency, identity, and sense of belonging gave school teams more actionable data so that they could convene student groups. Um, my student advisory has worked on the ability to take action related to those because there is a relationship between those three areas of the Castle competencies and student achievement. How they go together is a whole presentation unto itself. But this year, there was a revision that included the research office, really a, um, precision and looking at what was previously asked in that annual survey that we might want to continue in the, um, in the Pulse survey and to the point of school safety.
So a year ago, we worked together with Safer LBUSD and some staff members to add a section around school safety specifically for the purpose of gathering some more focused data about the students' feeling of safety on the campus, interactions with staff, interactions with school safety officers. Um, we did that intentionally, recognizing that it doesn't tell the whole story, but it does provide a, a pulse point, a touch point around the feeling that the student is holding in that moment in time, which could be impacted if there is a circumstance the day before this is completed on the campus um, that shakes the sense of safety, there, that could be reflected. Um, the, the opposite could also be true. And so the intention was to co-create some items for the survey that allow us to continue to have checkpoints around those experiences. And, um, as Dr. Baker mentioned, we did make revisions to the survey as a whole. We opted to keep those items because we wanted more than just three points that we had during last year to continue to go forward, hopefully with, um, opportunity for more comparison.
All of those survey data points can be disaggregated by race and ethnicity. And so it gives, um, us and schools, who this year in particular, actually reactivating their culture, climate leadership teams under the direction of Dr. Sosa Valdarama and the Level Offices, including David Zaid and Ed Samuel's, using that data in a very intentional way related to MTSS and others. So it's a source that provides schools a lot of specificity about their student groups. And we aim to not have a disparity between our students of color and other students or comparison groups. Our, our data has been, um, has risen over the last several years and has been stable and has experienced gap closure. So those are good things and their plan to also have an impact on student achievement in greater ways than we have seen yet.
So Commander in Chief Smith, is that the title now? I, I don't know. No, um, well, first off, thank you again for updating the slides. I know that it's been said more than once, but I will reiterate the importance of language and, um, uh, really having a more community-centric approach, uh, towards our, um, like you've titled before, Office of Community Safety or School Safety, or we were using the term previously, law enforcement, right? But school safety, uh, is really, really appreciated. So I, I'm just wanted to commend you for making that update. One of the things that I wanted to bring up, and it was on the last slide here, when you were referring to, um, the department's interactive, interaction with restorative justice programs or the restorative justice team? So not to make a suggestion, but more to give, uh, my input here is that when I think of, uh, young men and young women who have had a negative interaction with the school district or, uh, with any form of leadership, uh, often, uh, that interaction leaves a sense of trauma, you know? And unfortunately, a negative sense of trauma. And so when I think about like programs like, uh, the Long Beach Bar Foundation's, um, a program that they host, I look at opportunities for us to interact again with these young men and young women that unfortunately at first come to us at a negative interaction, but leaving them with a positive interaction. So opportunities to re-engage young people, uh, even in the process of their restorative justice program. And I, I would hope that we would look at opportunities like that, uh, as we continue to expand as a team.
I do have a few more questions. So these are my questions. Uh, when will the Oversight Committee be created? How soon will it be up and running? How will they hear grievances from parents? And then just out of curiosity, uh, were students, families, and educators consulted before presenting this idea to the board?
Yeah, so the Oversight Committee is something that's going to be very important throughout this process. Um, as I mentioned earlier, this is something that is gonna be done with deliberate intent. And I don't have a date for you that I can say concretely, this is when the Oversight Committee will be done. But those conversations will be happening, uh, almost immediately as we look to build out what that's going to look like, how it's going to be done. We need to make sure we have everything in place before we bring them in. But those conversations are gonna start immediately.
Any estimate?
I would say probably in the springtime. If we're looking at an implementation to roll out in January, I would hope to have that closely followed, let's say, early March. But again, I want to make sure that it's done correctly so it's effective. If we have an Oversight Committee, just to have an Oversight Committee, it doesn't do anyone any good. That'll be up to how that Oversight Committee wants to approach and that'll be done through co-collaboration with them as we design out, you know, what they're gonna be overseeing, what that's going to entail. Yeah, so we utilized a lot of information from the Pulse survey, a lot of information just from conversations had throughout, uh, our schools with existing officers, as well as major feedback from the principals and administrative teams at the school sites.
Do we have any further questions or comments? Um, I would just like to commend you and your staff because I've been at school sites for special events. Um, most recently at, um, Twain Elementary, and a couple of the officers were there. And I think the kids got a kick out of it. They were, you know, um, interacting with them. And I think when you're building positive relationships, especially from a young age, that that's a good thing. Okay, so this is an action item, so we, um, will need a motion.
Move for approval?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? And our student board member?
Aye.
So that passes five-zero with a preferential vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
And next, we have item sixteen point two, um, Student Outcome Focused Governance, uh, Board Self-Evaluation. So the last time we conducted the Board Self-Evaluation was at our January sixteenth meeting. July, sorry. That makes a difference, big difference, January and July, holy cow. Um, starts with a J though, I'll tell you. So our last Board Self-Evaluation was July sixteenth. Um, and that evaluation, we gave ourselves a total of thirty-two points, which was approximately thirty-two points from the previous evaluation, I want to say. So that was good. So we're gonna jump right in. And so on the first, uh, domain, which is vision and goals, we're gonna start from the point where we left off the, um, last time. So, uh, just as kind of a refresher, the furthest left column, it should be red, it's kind of pink, but if it was red, we might not be able to see the, um, the wording on that. Everything in that column, uh, should be false. And it was last time, so it, that hasn't changed. And then the next column over, for Approaching Student Outcomes Focus, we met all of those. And also in the third column over, Meeting Student Outcomes Focus, we met all of those as well. And that got us to twenty-five points. So in the column for Mastering Student Outcomes Focus, the first point is, uh, the board used a process that included students, parents, staff, and community members in a way that leads them to express ownership of the adopted goals and...
I would say we haven't done that yet, but we are hoping to start doing that starting next week.
Okay, so that's gonna happen real fast. And then, um, all of the interim goals are predictive. I don't know if I need to read all these or we can...
I do have a question around that second one, uh, Diana. It says, last line there, uh, has authority over roughly eighty percent of whatever the interim goal is measuring. Not sure how we would know that or determine that. Any, any thoughts from the team?
I can share a little bit that I've gleaned from the time in my cohort with, uh, the council. Um, essentially, think, so if we think about our goals and our interim goals, think about Goal One. Goal One, about reading by third grade. We have interim goals related to fluency, um, foundational skills, and comprehension through I-Ready. Those are all things that are within our sphere of influence through professional development, through support with teachers, what teachers are doing, that all filters up through the superintendent. So when it says superintendent, doesn't necessarily mean that the Dr. Baker specifically is, I mean, out providing a training, but she and staff are, um, have control over at least eighty percent of that. And so we believe that in, within the goals that we have set, that superintendent and staff have that eighty percent or more influence. Anything you would add, Dr. Baker?
I, I was just going to add, I think it's also why the interims come to you and the way that they do, which is staff designs the interims to be predictive and because we should be able to, use them and to think about their, well, their predictability as well as what we have control over. as what we have control over. Because there are a lot of things we don't have control over and that others don't have control over.
Can you, can you think of an example of what, one of those might be, a thing that we don't have control over?
Yeah, I mean, so I think about, like, we, we want parents to be highly engaged in their education. And we encourage that, and we design strategies around parent engagement, and it's not something that we have control over. However, training and the methodology we use for teaching reading, we have control over. And I use, and I'll use the word control very lightly because it's, it can be a loaded word. So it's just what, what are we able to design and what do, what can we impact as adults in our system, different than how it might be something that's...
Okay, and the next one is, the Board relied on a root cause analysis, comprehensive student needs assessment, or similar research-based tool to inform identification of and prioritization of potential goals. So I'm seeing, yeah. So is it fair to say that we're still at the Meeting Student Outcomes Focus on Vision and Goals? So at twenty-five points, are we good with that? Okay, then we will move on to Values and Guardrails. And where we left off last time, we met, well, all of the, all of the statement, okay, both of the statements, in the far right, far left, holy cow, far left column are false. So the next column, we met all of those requirements, gave ourselves five points. And then in the Meeting Student Outcomes Focus column, we decided that we met the first three. And then after that, so on the fourth paragraph, it says, "The Board has considered adoption of one or more theories of action to drive the school system." And we had a workshop this morning with our coach, and one of the subjects was theories of action, and we discussed it. As a board, do we want to say we've met that requirement because we discussed it? Or is there a different interpretation? And so I want to open that up right now for discussion, if anybody wants to share.
So I would say where we left off at, after that conversation, is that we wanted to consider the adoption. Dr. Baker read right from our theory of action from our district strategic plan.
Right.
The consultant had previously shared some example language. So, and I'm speaking for myself, so what I encouraged, suggested for our board to do is, hey, can we, can we spend some time looking at the district strategic plans, theory of action, some of the wording that was provided, so that at least we could say that we did that and considered it. Whether we adopted it or not, I don't think that's what this is asking us to do. But I think formally, what, what my ask was of the board is that we do look at it, spend some time, whether it's at an upcoming workshop, board meeting, the consultant said that could help support that.
Okay. So are you saying we haven't met the requirement yet? Or would you say that the discussion this morning meets that requirement? Because the requirement does not say we adopt one, it's just that we considered one.
So because we didn't take, that item was not an action item this morning, I'm saying that we, we didn't even have an opportunity to consider. We broached it, but I, I don't think we considered, I don't think that conversation counts as considering adoption.
Okay, does anybody...
That's my opinion.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Otto? Member Miller?
Yeah, broaching the conversation isn't a same consideration. I think, I think that when it comes to us accomplishing that goal, because we will very, very soon, it will be based on us having a firm conversation about one to two theories of action, and just having the conversation, though it's kind of considering, it's not for me formally.
I appreciate that. Okay, so what I'm hearing, and tell me if I'm wrong, what I'm hearing is we have not met that requirement. Okay. So that's something that we need to look at going forward. But we have met the next two requirements in that column. If we move to the far right column in the blue, Mastering Student Outcomes Focus, the first one is, "The Board used a process that includes students, parents, staff, and community members in a way that leads them to express ownership of the adopted guardrails, and if applicable, theories of action." I'd say we haven't gotten there either. Okay. And then the next one, I believe we have met. So the last one in that column is, "In addition to the guardrails on the superintendent's authority, the Board has adopted one to five guardrails on its own behavior and evaluates itself against them at least quarterly." We did start the process this morning. I believe we came up with some draft guardrails, but again, that's going to have to be revisited before we can give ourselves credit for that, I think.
So, just for the record, Man of Chair, so I volunteered, and my colleagues were cool with it, to type up the draft language that we co-developed this morning. In addition to that, Member Miller had one that didn't make it up to the flip charts, as did I. So we'll send those to Dr. Baker. And then Board Member Lopez, we want to also invite you, encourage you that if you have any suggested draft Board guardrails, to also please send them to Dr. Baker. And then we would send anything that I have, that Jill has, to the consultant. We talked a little bit about some prompts to then send back to us and get us to reflect and think through what next steps would be with that. So just wanted to confirm that that, that's where we left off this morning.
Great. And thank you so much for volunteering to do that, to compile those drafts. So we remain at five for Values and Guardrails. So we are at thirty, I want to say. And the next domain is Monitoring and Accountability. All of the requirements on the left are false, so we can move on to the next column. As of the last evaluation, we checked off everything but the last paragraph, which is, "The superintendent is evaluated only on performance regarding the Board's goals, guardrails, and interim goals and guardrails. The Board considers superintendent performance to be indistinguishable from school system performance." That is also something that we discussed this morning, but we are in the process of doing that, but it's not done yet. So we really can't give ourselves points until we do that.
We're almost there.
We're, we're almost there, we're very close.
Almost doesn't count.
I know, but we're working on it. We're, yes. And so the next column for Meeting Student Outcomes Focus, the first paragraph is, "The Board invests no less than twenty-five percent of its total board authorized public meeting minutes monitoring its goals." So I want to thank Member Otto, for volunteering to do our time tracking, not just for September, but also October, November, and December. So I'm reminding you, you volunteered to do that. So thank you very much.
Are we at twenty-five, Doug?
Actually, at the September seventeenth meeting, we were at forty-eight.
Which is fabulous, which is fabulous. Yeah, forty-eight percent. I think that's great. And our coach...
I don't, I don't take credit for that. I just recorded the numbers.
But I think that's good. I think that's very reflective of collaborative effort. That takes a lot.
We're getting there, but mastery is fifty.
Well, we're so close to that one. And our coach says that for the entire quarter, we're between twenty-five and fifty percent for the quarter. So very good progress on that one. And then we checked off the next one, no more than two goals are monitored per month. The next one is every goal is monitored at least four times a year. We're on track to do that. We, that's part of our monitoring calendar. So that one and the next one about guardrails, I think, well, I think we can check those off. What do you think? Should we check those off?
I think all, all of them except for one in that column, the Board time.
So the next one I think you're referring to is, "The Board has been provided copies of, but unless required by law, did not vote to approve or disapprove the superintendent's plans for implementing the Board's goals, and worked to ensure that the plan included both an implementation timeline and implementation instruments." Is that the one you're referring to?
Isn't that, forgive me, isn't that the work that you and Board Member Miller and Dr. Baker and the coaches are doing, the implementation timeline?
So are you saying we have met that requirement?
If, if that's what that is, yes.
Well, I, I believe that's what it is. So, so I believe we can check that one off. Yeah. So everybody good with that?
The, the, next to, next to the bottom?
Yes. Second one from the bottom.
I thought I wrote not yet.
Not yet.
What I'm not sure about is the implementation instruments. I don't know how we're defining that.
Um, I, let's see. I think the implementation instruments would be the interims. Because we have a way of, um, monitoring those goals and guardrails through all the interims. I, you know what? It sounds to me like I need to check in with our coach on this one. So I'm going to make a note of that. Just so we have some clarification. Okay. Which is inconsequential because you, you have to meet every requirement in the previous column in order to, so, so we'll have that. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get that one taken care of soon. And then the last point, the most recent annual superintendent evaluation took place no more than twelve months ago, and we've checked that one off because we do that on a regular basis. So in the far right column for Mastering Student Outcomes Focus, the first one, "The Board invests no less than fifty percent of its total board authorized public meeting minutes each month." We're not quite there? We're real close to that one. Only board work was discussed and/or acted on during board authorized public meetings. And I think that would also allow for whatever legal requirements we had also. So we, we could possibly get there. "The Board modifies its goals, guardrails, and monitoring calendar no more than once during the span of the Board's adopted goals, unless they are met sooner. A longer period allows for more focus. Shorter allows for less." That, that's going to be hard to tell before the lifespan of the goals and guardrails.
Diana?
Yes.
I do think in various parts of this tool, there's references to Board goals and guardrails. But there's two Board goals and guardrails. There's the Boards and guardrails that we already established, the four goals and three guardrails. And then there are also things that are referred to as Board guardrails that are the draft ones. So if, if we could, with consultation from Greg, differentiate when it's, when it means Board goals and guardrails, the superintendent ones versus Board goals and guardrails, the ones that we're, we're working on drafting, I think that would be important for us to know, when, when is it, which guardrails?
Okay. Okay. Yes, that is confusing because we have the Board guardrails for the superintendent, and we have Board guardrails we're working on for the Board. Okay. Let's see. "The school system has achieved at least half of its interim goals during the previous twelve-month period." Not yet. "If the Board approves an annual budget, it does so only after determining that the Board's goals are the first priority for resource allocation." I know we're working towards that. "And the majority of the Board's monitoring sessions during the period were rated effective or highly effective." And we, we are working on that. It's a process, it's a journey. And also, I want to thank Member Lopez because she's working on going over the monitoring to rate our effectiveness on that. So at some point, we will have a look at that and see where we land, unless you have that information now?
I sent that to Greg, our consultant.
Oh, okay. Okay. And I believe we're doing well with that. So that domain did not earn us any points, but we are working on, we're still working on, on those. So we are still at thirty. As we move to Communication and Collaboration, all of the items in the left column are false. So we move on to the next column. And at, at the last evaluation, we gave ourselves one point because we met those requirements. So going to the column for Meeting Student Outcomes Focus, the first one is, "There are no more than four board authorized public meetings per month." We've met that part. But here's the tricky part, none lasts more than three hours. So, yeah, I know, there's snickering and...
Can you count? If it goes overnight, it's got two different days, so you have six hours.
Yeah. So that's, that's something we're going to have to strive towards, is no meeting lasting more than three hours. And then the next point down is, "The Board schedules no more than five topics for discussion during any one board authorized public meeting. The Board limits its adoption of Board policies regarding school system operations to matters that are required by law, and appropriate exercise of the Board's oversight authority as defined by the Board's adopted goals and/or guardrails, and that existing policies that do not meet one of these criteria have been removed from the Board's policy manual." Although the superintendent may choose to retain them for administrative policy or regulation. And we are just starting that, well, we've started that process with the, and it's referred to as a policy diet. And so we've started that process. That's a work in process. We're, we're not able to earn ourselves more points quite yet. But we did meet the last requirement for the meeting agendas. In the last column for Mastering Student Outcomes Focus, "There are no more than two board authorized public meetings per month, and none last more than two hours." That's in the Mastering column. None last more than two hours. "The Board schedules no more than three topics for discussion during any board authorized public meeting. The Board has adopted few..." The board has adopted few enough policies that the full board as a whole is able to review every policy at least once during every length of time equal to the board member's term of office, which in our case is four years. So, that means that we will go through each policy at least once every four years. And that's something we're working on. The board received the final version of materials to be voted on at least seven calendar days before the board authorized public meeting during which the materials would be considered. I'm gonna check that off because that is like clockwork. We always get that stuff seven days in advance. And for monitoring reports, we get that two weeks in advance. So, thank you staff for that. The board used a process that included students, parents, staff, and community members in a way that led them to express ownership of the adopted goals and guardrails. And yes, we did that. So, we are still at one point for communication and collaboration. And the next domain is unity and trust. All of the items in the far-left column are false, which is good. We moved to the next column. At our last evaluation, we gave ourselves one point because we met all those requirements. And in the third column over, meeting student outcomes focus, we gave ourselves credit for the first three points. There's one more in that column. And it is the board unanimously agreed during the most recent self-evaluation that all board members have honored the three aforementioned ethical boundaries during the previous evaluation period. So, I'm gonna ask my colleagues, how do you feel about that one?
I don't think we've done that explicitly.
So, what would we need to do to make that one official?
Behave differently.
What did you say?
Should behave differently.
Well, I think there's two in addition to that. We have not codified a conflict, an ethics and conflicts of interest statement requiring that board members fully recuse themselves from matters involving individuals or organizations who made contributions to them or appointed them. We haven't codified that anywhere to my knowledge.
I believe we have. We did, and we all signed it.
Did we include that specific language?
We did. And I'm looking at our legal counsel for confirmation.
We did.
We did do that.
We included language that was also, we worked with the Great City Schools, the language that was compliant with this.
Okay. Well, congratulations to us then.
And compliant with the legal requirements under the code.
Maybe that was a meeting I missed. I don't know. No, it's good to hear. Okay, so then I retract my comment.
Okay. So, we did that. And so, this says that the board unanimously agreed during the most recent self-evaluation that all board members. And so, the tricky part was I think that we had just done that at the prior meeting, maybe. Where are we? Unity and trust. Unity and trust. So, we did that in June. Yeah, we did that in June. The ethics and conflicts of interest statement. And then, what, I don't, I don't remember if during that evaluation, we talked about... Oh, wait. Let's see. There wasn't time in the previous evaluation period because we had just, we had just adopted that and signed it in June. So, we didn't have the full quarter. We've had a full quarter. We've had a full quarter that we've, since we've signed that agreement. So, so we could, I imagine at this evaluation, would that, would that be the most recent? Well, what we could do is agree now because that would satisfy the requirement for the next evaluation, if not tonight. What do you feel about that?
So, Jeff, can you read the precise language on that conflict, on that ethics and conflicts of interest statement?
Give me a few minutes to pull it up.
Sure. And only because if we're going to agree that we're upholding that, I wanna be transparent and hold that standard to myself.
Okay. So, while that information is becoming available, do we want to, do we wanna... I don't know. If we agree that we've done that, do we wanna make that available for the next evaluation? Because it says at the most recent evaluation.
That would be today.
That would be today.
So, we could fulfill that if we agree to do that.
Okay. And so, that was my thinking, but I'm not sure and I kinda wanted to get a consensus. So, because this certainly is the most recent.
The last one.
So, so we are on unity and trust for that domain. Yes. And it would be the last paragraph under meeting student outcomes focus. And that paragraph says, "The board unanimously agreed during the most recent self-evaluation that all board members have honored the three aforementioned ethical boundaries during the previous evaluation period." So, the three, the three boundaries would be that members fully recuse themselves from matters involving individuals or organizations who made campaign contributions to them or who appointed them. That would be one. That members are responsible for the outcomes of all students, not just students in their region of the school system. And that members do not give operational advice or instructions to staff members. So, those are the three, I believe. So, that's what we're considering. That's the matter before us, those three. But I'm gonna wait for confirmation from our legal counsel just to make sure that I have that correct. And then while we're waiting, we can think about, we can think about us as individuals if we've adhered to that or those three in particular. So, maybe, should we get back to that then? Let's move on to the next column, which is mastering student outcomes focus. So, the first one there is, "The board unanimously agreed during the most recent self-evaluation that all board members adhered to all policies governing board operating procedures during the previous evaluation period." And that would be our bylaws. So, do we feel like we've fulfilled that requirement?
And then I do have the document here in front of me.
Okay.
So, on the conflict of interest statement, number thirteen is conflict of interest from campaign contributions. And it indicates the board will adhere to disclosure requirements under the Government Code Section 84308 when rendering a decision involving or involving a contract license permit or other entitlement for use. So, it tracks the government code provision related to that requirement to disclose campaign contributions, including any exceptions to those requirements. So, that was the language that was put into the ethics code.
So, that, that isn't precisely the wording that's in here, Jeff?
It's not precisely the wording. And that was in working with the Great City Schools and your consultant in terms of meeting this requirement. This was the language that both he, I, and also the board special counsel agreed to related to ethics statement.
And when did we pass that? When did we adopt that?
This was on June 16th.
And just to be clear, and I'm applying to myself, I haven't received any campaign contributions since this was passed. But I still don't hear, like, it doesn't specify like in the last twelve months in the history of time.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, I could read the rest of the statement from a party. So, when rendering, it's a paragraph.
Got it.
From a, have not, "When rendering a decision involving a contract license permit or other entitlement for use from a party or participant who has provided a campaign contribution of $500 or more in the prior twelve months, the board member shall not make participating making or in any way attempt to use the board's member's official position to influence the district's decision in that proceeding. The contribution disclosure requirements and restrictions do not apply to contracts that are required to be competitively bid. Labor contracts, employment, personal employment contracts, contracts valued under $50,000, contracts where no other party received financial compensation, or contracts from another governmental agency."
Got it.
Those are the exceptions to that requirement. And so, because California is a little bit different in terms of those pieces, that was the language that we inserted into the ethics code.
Thank you.
Okay. So, do we feel like, do we feel like we've met that requirement?
So, I would go on the honor system, President Craighead. If each of us individually feels that we upheld those three, then we're unanimous about it?
I'm gonna go back and check.
I, you, I'm sorry. What are you checking?
And it would, but it would only be effective since June, right?
For the prior twelve-month period, right.
But, but, so for decisions from June when this was adopted to today, right?
Correct.
Even if we received campaign contributions in the last twelve months, it's only on action items since June.
Well, the government code provision would have required you to identify that before that.
Right, through our disclosures and all that stuff.
Yeah, as it relates to your ethics statement.
Correct. Correct. But here, I'm talking about this specific policy that we adopted in June.
Correct.
That still adheres to state policy.
It does.
So, does that make any difference for you from June?
I'd rather accurately stay what it is and I can't do that off the top of my head.
Okay.
So, Jeff, just to be clear here, and this is good. If we're filing our, what are they called, N-700s yearly? That's the process by which we disclose gifts, things that then would pose the potential for conflict of interest.
That would be correct, as well as your own financial disclosures as part of your election process.
Election process. So, if we are in compliance with those, with or without our own policy that we adopted in June, we would be upholding the...
Because this is a codification of what's already in the government code provision? Yes.
Okay.
Assuming that your campaign contribution disclosures were accurate, then you could, then that would be accurate.
Correct. Okay. That's what I wanted to go for. So, do you still wanna go back, Doug?
Yeah, I wanna look. I mean, I don't wanna be wrong.
Yep. Sounds good.
I had that $10,000 contribution from Eric, but...
You did not. That is not a true statement.
That would be a joke. Let's go to, let's go back to the mastering student outcomes focus. Let's see. The first one, "The board unanimously agreed during the most recent self-evaluation that all board members adhered to all policies governing board operating procedures during the previous evaluation period." Do we think that we've met that requirement? And that would be like our bylaws that we just passed. Do we feel like we've met that requirement? We're not feeling confident there.
No.
Okay. We'll go to the next one. "All board members and the superintendent agreed during the most recent self-evaluation that none of the board members have given operational advice or instructions to staff members."
Yes. I think we can do that. I mean, I can.
So, that's another on-your-honor thing. Are we feeling okay with?
I mean, we passed a policy that said that we would not provide...
Right. Right. So, on-your-honor, do we feel like we've adhered to that policy?
Yes.
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 Okay.
For the record, Dave Miranda is wearing Chargers lanyards on his own fruition.
Moving on to the next one. "All board members have memorized all of the board's goals and the current status of each."
You gonna test us, President Craighead?
No, because then I would need to be a part of that. And I don't believe I have memorized all the current status of each to tell you, just to be honest. I, you know. Okay. And then, "The board conducted a quarterly self-evaluation during the previous three-month period and, oh, or annually if the most recent score was eighty or higher and unanimously voted to adopt the results." Well, we're working on it. So, we remain at one point for that one. I think, yeah, I don't think we've earned any more than we did last time on that. So, the last domain is continuous improvement. All the items on the far-left column are false. So, we move to the next column. And we know that the board tracks its use of time and reports monthly the percentage of board authorized public meeting time invested in monitoring the board's goals and interim goals. And we know that we're at twenty-five to fifty percent. So, we've met that one. And the next one, "The board tracks the estimated annual cost of all staff time invested, etcetera." There's more to it. But we have not yet met that one, but our staff is working on that. They, they will receive training from our coach? Or is there a question on that one?
Just confirming what you just said.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there, I'm gonna look around. There will be training on, it hasn't happened yet? Is that, is that true? Well, anyhow, I know that there will be a training on that. And then the next one, "The board has provided time during regularly scheduled board authorized public meetings to recognize the accomplishments of its students and staff regarding progress toward goals and interim goals." We're gonna check this one off. Staff does a fabulous job of uplifting our students and schools that are doing well. So, that's, that's a big one. Yes. We, yeah, we, I don't know. Dr. Baker, do you wanna?
And we have some, I wouldn't check it off right now completely. We have some additional ideas to share with you in the implementation team meeting that are specifically focused on the goals and guardrails or the goals themselves because there's a cascade of looking at those data points by school. And so, we have some additional ideas for that. So, probably in the way that it's written here. Haven't done it yet.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. And then the last item in that column, "The most recent board self-evaluation took place no more than twelve months ago using this instrument." We just did that in July. So, we can check... So, um, we can check that one off. And then moving to the next column for meeting student outcomes focus. The most recent board annual self-evaluation took place no, no more than 45 days before the most recent superintendent evaluation. And I'm not quite sure about that one because I, I'm not sure, uh, what date we're using for the evaluation because it's kind of a process.
I mean, I wouldn't, just because you're, you're not gonna go past the approaching column. It's probably just naming these as what we're striving for.
What we...
Right? What you're striving for.
Add, add that to our, our list of, of what we're striving for. I think we're good with that. The board has hosted and the board members have led or co-led at least one training session. That's happening on Monday. We cannot give ourselves credit for that yet. It's happening this Monday at 6 o'clock at the Assistance League. And everybody's invited. So, um, we're, we're on our way. We're, we're making progress there. And then the next item, the board has continuously updated the status and targets of all goals, guardrails, and interim goals and guardrails, and publicly displays them in the room in which the board most frequently holds regularly scheduled board meetings. And as Member Otto is pointing out, um, in his best vanna white, we do have those posted. And, um, not only do we have them posted here, but all the, uh, updated status for the, um, you know, and, and targets for all the goals, guardrails are posted online. And so those are available publicly. So I believe we can give ourselves credit for that item? Great. And then the last one in that column. The board conducted the most recent self-evaluation and voted to adopt the results. And yes, we did that. Then the last column for Mastering Student Outcomes Focus. The board included students as presenters in at least one of the student outcomes focus governance training sessions during the previous 12 months. We haven't done that yet, but we do have a student board member that we may be pressing into service at some point this school year. Just FYI, word member, student board member, Nwala. Prior to being selected, all newly selected board members received training on student outcomes focus governance from fellow board members on their board or from a certified student outcomes focused governance coach. And we're not quite there in the election cycle, so that remains to be seen. And the next item, the board conducted the most recent quarterly self-evaluation or annually, if the most recent score was 80 or higher, and unanimously voted to adopt the results. And we did, I believe it was unanimous to adopt the results. So now...
How many points?
Yeah, how many points? I don't believe we, um, well, I'm gonna go back to the beginning. I'll go back to the beginning. The first domain, vision and goals, 25 points. Uh, the next domain, values and guardrails, five points. For monitoring and accountability, we're so close, but we didn't earn any points there.
It's at 30?
So we're up to 30. Communication and collaboration.
What, what, we got no points for monitoring and accountability?
No.
Okay.
Not yet, not yet, but we're, so much...
I'm not, I'm just...
Work is being done. Okay. So moving on to communication and collaboration, one point. So what are we up to now, 31? Unity and trust, one point. 32. Continuous improvement, not quite. So that's 32. 32 would be our grand total. So now we need a vote to adopt...
Vote to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
One of the things that, and now this is our second time going through this iteration. The one piece that I, I think that the tracker that we have here can do a better job of is keeping track of the conversations from the previous meeting. If it's okay with you all, I'd like to look into maybe updating the way that we go about using this tracker that captures not only previous notes, but kind of where we are within the process of we started the convers- if we haven't started the conversation, if we're striving, or if we've met it. And just making sure that we can capture that piece moving forward as we go and take a look into next quarter.
So could we have like a, um, what do you call it, a live document? A, a shared document that we can all refer to and as we're making progress, updating that?
Yeah.
You could have something similar to the actual implementation timeline that your coach updates as items, the status of items changes. Yes.
Right. And I just think that that will, one, improve the, um, transparency of this conversation, but more importantly, can help expedite, uh, our meetings as, once again, one of the goals that we fell short of today was the timing piece. So, uh, all things considered, um, I would be, uh, more than willing to help with that piece going into, um...
Implementation team meeting. You can introduce that as an item on the agenda for implementation team meeting, so the coach will...
Great suggestion. Yeah. And so, yeah, so add that as an item to the agenda as, I just think that'll be another tool for us to, once again, support our larger goals in regards to these meetings.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Student board member, Nwala?
Aye.
So that passes 5-0 with a preferential vote. Thank you, everyone. And next on the agenda, we have student outcome focus governance implementation timeline. We have moved from meeting every week to now every other week. And our next item of business is our community engagement meeting, which is scheduled for Monday, October 6th at 6 o'clock at the Assistance League in Long Beach on Spring Street. Um, and everybody is welcome and invited to join us, um, for that meeting. Member Miller, do you have anything to add?
No. Uh, I guess the one piece that I will, uh, add to what you've brought up though is, like you said, this will be our first one. And I think that when it comes to, uh, this process, there's going to be some changes. There's going to be some imperfections. There's going to be some things that we're continuously working on. And so as the community comes to participate, to learn more about student come out, student outcome focused governance, to find out more about the status of our goals, so on and so forth. I'm also gonna ask for a little bit of grace as we go through this process. As, uh, obviously, we're all there for the best intentions and the best success for our students. So, uh, please understand that as we're working to perfect, uh, these community engagement meetings, that this will be our very first one. And so we're gonna bring out all of the bells and whistles, but there will be some hiccups along the way.
Right. And I appreciate that because we're going first, so that, that's gonna be helpful. And also, this is a way for us to check in with the community, um, for our goals and guardrails. And so that's the overall theme of the, of the meeting. It's a, it's a check-in for that. Okay, so, yes.
Were you gonna allow more time for...
Oh, yes, yes.
So I do have a thought. So during our last, uh, board meeting, when we were on this agenda, uh, item, um, we were encouraged to start looking at possible venues and dates and availability in our respective areas for the next, um, community outreach and engagement session. In doing so, I noticed that our next one is not till January. And I have been in conversation with various community partners on availability and dates. Um, and so, um, if you all are okay with it and there's another board member willing to pair up with me, um, the community partners that I've been asking have dates available next month in November. Uh, I do feel that if we wait to January, we lose sort of three months of momentum from this meeting. Um, we could still keep the January one if, if, if we want to, but I don't want to lose the opportunity here uh, because we go into then the holiday break and then we come back in January. And then if we look back from January to next week, um, I think we, there, there's a, there's some learnings, but there's also opportunities that we, um, may miss. And, and here I'm thinking because it's gonna be real hard to find dates where there isn't already stuff going on, district stuff going on, board meetings going on, holidays going on. And so what, what I'm proposing to the board is, um, if, if we have venues and possible dates that work for us in November, could we consider that, um, as our, as our next community engagement outreach and session? And if, and if November doesn't work, then we keep January, but at least we tried.
Right, yeah. So, um, first off, I, I appreciate you already getting ahead of the homework here. Uh, one of the things that we, or at least when I was helping with putting together the calendar, was considering was, one, bandwidth. Two, was the holiday season. And then three, was staying within the, uh, uh, guidance of our student outcome focused governance. And so when we talk about having, uh, our community engagement meetings, uh, back-to-back months, I think that it goes against a couple of principles. One was giving us time to review and recalibrate. Uh, I think it also, uh, with all due respect, uh, I'm a firm believer in giving, uh, the staff not only a bit of time to, um, review and, and calibrate, like I said, but also I just think that can be just a heavy demand. There, there's a lot of work from the admin team and, uh, et cetera that goes into helping us put on these events. And so to go back-to-back months, I just, I just know that that would be a lot on the team. So these were things that I considered when we were putting together, or we, we as a board agreed to doing five of, of these, uh, a year and making sure that they were evenly spaced. And so I think that doing it back-to-back months will put us in a situation where not only will it go against, uh, both of those principles, but I think that it also can result in maybe burnout or, um, exhaustion. And so tho- those are just things that I considered. But I do hear your point in saying like, hey, if we're having our first one, it creates momentum. I recognize that. I think that, um, that type of momentum was something that I hope would happen in January and then in March and then in, uh, what is that, May?
No, no, no.
Yeah. And, and August would be the last one, so.
So, Dr. Benitez, are you okay with that? We wait till the end of the year?
I'm not, but that's fine. I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, again, um, part of this is the calendar of it, right? So, uh, we're, we're going to get caught up in the same situation in January, in March with finding that sweet spot. So I just thought the, the further in advance, we could start identifying dates. And, and it's, I, you know, in the spirit of not overly taxing our staff, that's why I was like, at the last meeting, we're like, hey, let's start looking at venues, dates. So that, an opportunity came up and it is what it is.
We, I mean, we can manage a change in the schedule as long as we have an opportunity to look at date conflicts. Um, and I do wonder with the last one being in summer. I know there's been some discussion about lack of availability, both for staff who are off all summer and community. And, and the past, there's been a, you know, conversation about is summertime the best time to be doing engagement? Right now, and this was in the plan, which can be adjusted. That would be, um, District 1, Ms. Lopez's district in summer, in August. So you could exchange, you could, if you were to go earlier, it, you could exchange the August one and, I mean, there's no...
I'll honor the, the sentiments of, of, of Mr. Miller and my colleagues agree. I'll, I'll honor that for all the reasons I already mentioned.
And, and once again, I think the other part that, once, and I, uh, spelt that out in the plan, was that after August, we have an opportunity to regroup and revisit it. We say, you know what, Juan was right. And we'll go into 2026, 2027 and, uh, restructure the calendar.
So then, just the sequence, thank you, uh, uh, for the consideration. Just the sequencing, Dr. Baker, so, um, what is the order again of our areas that we're going in? Okay.
We've looked at existing date for conflicts with the district calendar and have a, a set of dates in those time periods that could be used for a community engagement session.
Great. Thank you.
We still do need locations and the farther in advance, um, that those can be provided. So for the January session, District 4, um, well, for all of them.
Okay. Do we have, uh, any other considerations for this item, the timeline? In that case, we'll move on to, uh, item 16.4. Uh, Long Beach City College District Memorandum of Understanding. And that's an action item.
Vote to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I see him here in the audience, uh, we're talking about great Butler campus. Can you share a little bit, uh, more detail?
Good evening. Yeah, I'll provide a little context. Of course, I'm here for questions as well. So LBCC has expressed interest just in exploratory talks with us as a partner agency. Uh, they're in, they're really searching for potential spaces for expansion of their programs on the education and training side of the house. Uh, they have approached us in the past about certain properties as we have underutilized spaces within our district portfolio. And really what this MOU sets forth is just the terms and conditions for potential, you know, really for collaborative conversations, for exploring partnership opportunities that benefit both agencies and benefit the community at large. Uh, at this point, we're really not far, like really far in advance in terms of any site-specific conversations. We really want to see this MOU kind of put forward first. LBCC approved the MOU via their board last month, uh, which is why we're bringing it forward today. Once the conversations do advance, if they advance past the exploratory nature, I would find myself right back here in front of the board, talking very specific, different agreements for potential lease, partnerships, joint use efforts, things of that sort.
Right. And just for confirmation, I remember this during one of the facilities presentation, that currently we're using the Butler campus as transitional housing for Washington. And that was the plan at least through 2027, 2028. Is that correct?
Correct. So we still have a few more years, uh, for Washington being at the Butler campus in particular. Uh, we do project potentially a few additional schools using the Butler campus. So even if conversations advance for that particular location, that, there's other things at play.
So, Mr. Miranda, just as, just as you mentioned that it's not specific to Butler in this case. It's not specific to any, uh, campus. Um, what kinds of things might lead us into a conversation when you're back with us and saying, hey, we're looking at this other campus or these other campuses?
And, and it's also our own assessment as we take stock and, and perform capacity and utilization studies. We've dipped in enrollment quite a bit over the years, so we're looking at space analysis of our own. Um, if we find ourselves in a position where there is that mutual benefit, right? So for myself, and we're looking at budget reductions and things of that sort, I'm kind of in a position where, as I oversee operations and maintenance functions, if there's that potential where LBCC has a desire to expand a program and there's that benefit for us perhaps to, to not put additional dollars into maintaining or operating certain spaces, we might find ourselves in one of those mutual benefit situations.
Which, on a weird, jokingly architectural note, Butler is a pour-and-place concrete project and it is fantastic. I love looking at those ceilings and the walls and so, they literally, the way that they built it, they literally poured the concrete on place and they tilted up the walls. It's fantastic.
Oh, tilt-ups. Okay, well, thank you. Okay. Well, thank you, unless there are any more questions, Mr. Miranda? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Um, in which case we will vote on that then. So, uh, no?
No.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any abstentions? That passes five-zero. Thank you, everyone. And now we are at report of board members. So, Member Miller.
Uh, yes, give me one second. Let me get to my notes. Juan was applauding, uh, our work as today we got really, really close to our goal of keeping it under two hours. So, kudo. Um, well, first off, I just wanted to thank you all for, uh, the effort that went into today's workshop. And I know that the workshops are always, um, a heavy lift by the admin team and by the consultants and, um, it just takes, it just takes a lot of work to put on, uh, a long eight-hour day for us five folks. And so it doesn't go unnoticed. And so I just wanted to thank everybody who had a hand in making sure that not only did we have all of the great materials that we needed, but we had refreshments and we were well-informed. And so it's just, um, very, very, we're very, very appreciative of your efforts. And so, uh, thanks again for, for that work. Uh, a couple of highlights I wanted to mention. First, I wanted to congratulate all of the high schools yesterday for their back-to-school night. I've already shared on multiple occasions how, um, I, important I think back-to-school night is for, uh, parents to get to meet the teachers and for new students to see that some of the great clubs that are going on on campus. Um, uh, opportunity to show off a little bit if you're doing something at school. So I just always think it's a really cool opportunity for kids to, uh, visit the campuses, uh, with their parents one more time. And so, uh, all things considered, I know a lot of effort goes into making back-to-school night a success as well as, uh, Board Member Nwala was telling me a little bit about all of the great work that happened over at, uh, McBride yesterday. So, uh, once again, just kudos to all of our high schools. A couple of, of updates. As first off, I wanted to acknowledge that on October eighth will be the CAC meeting. We already acknowledged all of the hundred and eighty-six people that signed up, um, to be in support of CAC. Uh, I am such a big supporter, uh, of that group. I've shared my personal story of why that group is so influential to at least the vast progression that my daughter is taking. And I couldn't, uh, be more proud of where that group has gone from when I first saw it and honestly, my first interaction uh, with the CAC. So, uh, all things considered, um, wanted to make sure that, uh, if there are any parents that are listening, obviously we have thousands of viewers that are watching at this moment, I wanted to remind them of the great opportunity available to them, uh, to learn more about ways that they can support their daughter or son, uh, that has a disability, and that is by attending the CAC meeting over at the TRC on October eighth. Uh, also, on October thirteenth, we have the San Kofa Parent Village meeting. Once again, that's also at the TRC, correct? Um, unfortunately, I haven't been able to be in attendance because my daughter actually has her speech therapy meetings, uh, on those nights, or at least the last two nights. But all things considered, San Kofa Parent Villages have, have also been a great opportunity to have community, to learn more about what's going on at the district for our black students, uh, but more importantly, ways to support your child. So if you are available to attend, uh, I would once again highly, highly endorse. Uh, that'll be the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez.
Yeah, I would just add, Mr. Miller on the CAC, I think it's also a, an important space to help guide our district's efforts, um, and, and, and provide input and feedback to, um, us being able to achieve success with our students with disabilities. All right. Um, so, uh, I'll start with a quick update. I was invited to, uh, present at Best Art Central Long Beach Partnership uh, meeting this past, uh, month or September, uh, meeting. And, um, they asked if I could provide some general district updates, but specifically around our early learning opportunities. So thank you to the team for, uh, helping, uh, put together, um, a presentation, uh, very well received. Um, it's incredible, uh, that because of the context in our communities, uh, of the dangers and fear around congregating in person, uh, it was a virtual meeting, but there were over eighty, uh, community members, uh, in attendance. So thank you for the invitation. Thank you for those community members that, um, attended and that, um, were engaged and, and the, the questions that were asked. So I'll be circling back with Dr. Baker and the team, uh, as that partnership, uh, sort of collected, uh, questions that I just wasn't able to get to, uh, that night. But as importantly, they were very interested in, um, someone from our early learning opportunities, uh, team or, or, or members, uh, coming back for a more in-depth, uh, because we did a very high level. I think it was only a fifteen, a twenty-minute update. Um, because there were a lot of questions about early Head Start and Head Start and CDC, uh, and all the other great stuff that our district is, is doing. So thank you for the invitation. Happy to be back. And, um, I did share with Dr. Baker about whether, uh, there's a good, uh, opportunity for us to, to go back and provide a more comprehensive, uh, presentation and update. Um, we had our Latino Heritage Celebration this past weekend. Big, big kudos for everyone, every single person that made that event happen. Um, and to everyone that came out and to all the performers, performers that were there. I think one of the, um, most beautiful thing in the midst of the challenges that our communities are facing are seeing, um, this district students and families outperforming and celebrating and, um, our district being in support and solidarity, uh, with that. So thanks to, uh, everyone that had a, a, a role in that. And, um, I, I, I was there, I left, I came back. Uh, all indicators is that it was a very successful, uh, event. Uh, so just, uh, th- thank you to, uh, to everyone for making that event happen in, in the midst of these, uh, trying times for our communities. Um, I will also be beginning my, uh, visits to all the schools in my area. So last year, in coordination, uh, with, um, school site staff, uh, I did morning check-ins, just showed up with some pan dulce and, and coffee and just checked in with parents, staff, uh, students. I just touched base with Patricia, uh, today. And my first, my first ask of Patricia is, hey, can we do this again? So I'll be starting off with Franklin in a couple of weeks. Um, uh, Ruth, uh, actually is, uh, has an ongoing meeting with parents there in the morning. And then I'll circle back with all the schools in my area, uh, to visit. And again, just to check in, share some updates from our district. But for me, it's more of a listening, uh, opportunity on things that we can be uh, responsive to and supportive, uh, of and, and lift up all those wonderful things happening at our school set. So, uh, please, if you're at, uh, um, if you're one of the principals at those schools, we'll be reaching out to you. Uh, and I'll start those, uh, visits, uh, through the remainder of our, uh, fall semester. Thanks. That's my report.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Otto? Would you like me to get back to you or? Okay. Um, Member Lopez?
Yeah, we're celebrating Latino Heritage Month. I just want to acknowledge all of those who worked around the clock to ensure a celebration at Cabrillo High School this past weekend. It was a beautiful way to celebrate the Latino culture, uh, with our students performing and sharing their gifts and talents with us. Uh, thank you to the parents, community members, students and educators who attended the event. Your presence was meaningful, especially during these challenging times. Y este a los padres de familia que asistieron a la celebración de nuestra herencia latina. Especialmente a este año que ha sido tan difícil, les doy las gracias por haber asistido. Y a los que no pudieron, estuvimos en solididad con ustedes. I'd also like to take this opportunity to speak to our immigrant students, students. I encourage you to reach out to your school or, uh, school counselor or school psychologist if you're feeling stressed over the deportations or if someone you know has been deported. I understand how incredibly difficult it can be to talk about what you're experiencing and feeling. I personally have found it very difficult to speak about it during last board meeting. And I didn't because it's not easy. But it's important that you get help. So students, please make sure you go see someone if you are not, um, if you're not feeling well, if you're feeling scared, if you're feeling lonely. And to our district staff, I urge you to make sure all schools have counselors and so, school psychologists ready to assist our affected students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Otto?
Yeah, I, I also want to, uh, say how, how fun and interesting it was to go to the, uh, Latino Heritage Day last Saturday. And, uh, what I was surprised but very grateful for was all the, the groups that were there and, uh, that, uh, uh, you, you were able, I, I just learned a lot of things and, uh, they, they were very appreciative of, uh, of, uh, being there. I think it was a big success. I thought that the performances were, were great. I didn't get to see all of them because I was talking to people in the, in the booths, but, uh, but I saw a lot of them. Um, uh, back-to-school night, uh, I, I went to Wilson, the high school that, uh, uh, is in my area and, uh, 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 talked to a number of parents, uh, there. Um, I, I, I've, it's a mixed bag about whether people go back-to-back to school night. Um, uh, sometimes they just think that, uh, there's not much to do, but I did talk to some parents who were very excited about what was going on and what were, they were, uh, able to do. Uh, and I enjoyed that. I, uh, I'll tell a, a kind of a bad one on me, and that is that I then expected to go to, uh, uh, Sado and to, uh, to talk to the principal there. But then I thought I saw the principal at, uh, Wilson. And I thought, did I miss something about administrative assignments? But, uh, no, I hadn't. I went to Sado and Sado had had its o- open house, uh, in Au- in, uh, August. And that's because they started early. And, uh, so they're, they weren't having an open house, uh, uh, last night. Um, I too am, uh, setting up school visits. Uh, I, uh, tried to get to Jefferson, um, last week for the middle schools, but that conflicted with, um, uh, the, uh, ceremony at Long Beach City College for the induction of their Hall of Fame members. And a guy that I'm, was very close to, uh, uh, was being inducted. And so that, that was a, that was a very, very good event as well. I too am looking for locations for, uh, for our events, visits, uh, in, in my area. Uh, and, uh, I, I, I haven't found the ideal place yet, although I've got some feelers out. And I think that, uh, um, that it's, it's a very good idea. Um, what I was struggling to find, um, was as, and when you graciously skipped over me, was this document that the district had put out a couple of years ago on under student outcomes focused governance, um, which had to do with board member site visit protocols. And it comes up, there's a lot of questions that align to focusing on student outcomes and questions that do not align on focusing on, uh, student outcomes. And uh, that was very helpful to me when I go to schools. Uh, it could sort of, uh, gave me a, a, a good understanding of, of what could be learned and, and how to do that. And, uh, so, um, I, I now carry that with me in my portfolio. Uh, I'm going to start by school and then, uh, get ready to, uh, to do things. So, um, that's my report.
Thank you. Um, and I'll just join my colleagues in, in thanking staff and everybody who made it possible for our Latino Heritage Celebration on Saturday. It was beautiful. It was nice to be with everybody. And also the community aspect of it, there were, um, there was another event that was scheduled to happen the same day. And our, our staff made it possible that we combined celebrations. And I just think that speaks to, um, our strategic plan for community in, in engagement, community involvement. And I was very happy to hear that. And the, the organizations and the, um, organizers of the separate event that joined ours, very appreciative and very happy that that was able to take place. So thank you to staff and thank you for everyone, um, in attendance. And then of course, it was back-to-school night for our high schools, at least most of our high schools. And, uh, I attended, um, uh, Milliken and it was a very well-attended event. I tried to park and it, uh, I ended up um, driving through the neighborhood for a while and then ended parking a little bit on fire, which was, you know, it made me very happy because that meant that a lot of parents were participating. And I wanted to see what the campus looked like because it's under construction and that added a degree of difficulty for parents trying to navigate the campus. And as one person said, it's like freshmen trying to find their first class. What, you know, everybody's kind of referring to a map like, you know? But there were, uh, plenty of staff members out and about helping to direct people and, um, the, uh, jazz band was playing under the direction of Mr. Mitter. It was so nice to see him and, um, so nice to see our arts in full force, especially when it comes to Milliken because it, you know, strong music program, strong vocal program, strong drama, just, uh, you know, very, uh, uh, v- vital place. So thank you for staff because that makes a very long day when, when staff has to be there from, you know, early morning to in the evening. And they all do it with a smile on their face. So, uh, thank you. And I will turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Baker.
Thank you. Just a few things this evening. Um, first of all, October, since it's October first, October, we also celebrate Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And as a breast cancer survivor, I want to express my appreciation. Our Office of School Safety leads the Pink Patch Project. They raise funds through T-shirt sales and other things that celebrate breast cancer awareness. And then they donate that to the Todd Cancer Center. And I had, last year had the pleasure of joining them to give their check to the Todd Cancer, um, center. Also, our schools do a lot of fundraising for breast cancer awareness as well. And so, um, if you have an opportunity to be at a Pink Out football game, encourage you to celebrate breast cancer awareness with them. Um, Mr. Itzen and team, they are now engaged in the beginning phases of our implementation of the district's device use and social media safety policy. And something really special that's going to take place this fall are, is a speaker series kicking off on October thirteenth at Milliken High School in the auditorium. Information has just gone out district-wide for this opportunity to hear experts in the field, um, speak about our policy and speak about the, the research that backs up that policy. The, the first speaker will be Ed Peisner, the founder of the Organization for Social Media and Sa- Social Media Safety. Um, he has a whole story as to how he got into that field. And he, along with Crit Sitson, will provide a wonderful opportunity about finding safety and balance in our digital lives. So I hope we will have great attendance. There's plenty of room in the Milliken High School Auditorium for lots of people to attend. Um, and then just appreciated, appreciate the resolution that was passed tonight, acknowledging and honoring our principals. And so to hear Mrs. Craighead, here you read that resolution, getting down, um, to the fifth paragraph, where as school principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment es- experts, disciplinarians, community builders, budget analysts, facility managers, special programs administrators, guardians of various legal, contractual and policy mandates and initiatives. They are multipliers of good teaching, key to teacher retention, and second only to classroom instruction among all school-related factors affecting what students learn at school. Sounds to me like a description of super people. And we are so fortunate in our district to have an amazing group of principals who represent what that resolution states. So thank you to our principals. And then lastly, also celebrating Jules Rodriguez, who you saw a video spot on tonight, Nelson teacher extraordinaire. I had the opportunity to visit her classroom and to just express appreciation and, um, with her students in front of her. And to hear students speak about her and the impact that they're having on her life, um, that she's having on their lives was just really amazing. And so it's something that, um, this year was the first time that I've been able to do that in that way. Um, and it won't be the last because to hear students speak to their teachers about their impact is just amazing. Jules has an incredible life story that got her into education. And she's using all her gifts and connections around STEM to enhance the, the lives of those at Nelson Middle School. So, so we are so lucky to have her in Long Beach Unified School District. Her spouse also teaches in Long Beach Unified School District, so. Her spouse also teaches in Long Beach Unified School District, so lucky us. And with that in mind, that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the business of this evening's meeting. Thank you, everyone, for being here all day. And, uh, without any objection, we'll adjourn the meeting. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is Wednesday, October fifteenth. Thank you and good night.